You guys ready to roll? Frank, you ready? Folks, we're going to go ahead and get started if you don't mind taking your seats, or you're more than welcome to stand. I'm going to go ahead and call this June 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks everyone for attending in person. We do also have some folks joining us remotely via Zoom. We are going to start with our pledge of allegiance. Dakota, why don't you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with a true and just world.
Thank you, Dakota. I normally don't read this, and I want to bring it to the attention of those in the audience tonight, that back in 2007, the council did adopt principles for civil dialogue, and those are used by all boards, committees, and personnel of the city of Whitefish. And I would just like to briefly reiterate what those rules of engagement are, because I know a lot of folks are here to comment this evening. We provide a safe environment where individual perspectives are respected, heard, and acknowledged. We are responsible for respectful and courteous dialogue and participation. We respect diverse opinions as a means to find solutions. Based on common ground, we encourage and value broad community participation. We encourage creative approaches to engage public participation. We value informed decision-making and take personal responsibility to educate and be educated. We believe that respectful public dialogue fosters healthy community relationships, understanding, and problem-solving. We acknowledge, consider, and respect the natural tensions created by collaboration, change, and transition. And finally, we follow the rules and guidelines established for each and every meeting that we hold. So with those in mind, I will take public comment. I would like to invite first members that participated in our work session. If you don't mind, I'll take your comments first, and then we'll go to general public comment.
Thank you for that. And after going to the work session, I want to let everybody know who participated and that how much I appreciate how hard everybody works on all this. But one of the things that I heard when we were talking about mixed land use is I'm hearing like there's a need for more commercial mixed with residential. But I'm watching across the country, and even in this valley, how many commercial businesses have closed? Because the patterns of purchasing these days is online. Everybody's ordering everything online. People want underwear, they order them online. We have Walmart's now delivering, Costco delivers, and on top of that, we're going to have Amazon Distribution Center in Kalispell. That's telling me that a lot of people in this area are ordering online, which really would make me so sad to see urban light in the city if we put a lot of mixed commercial or added a lot of commercial space. Because I just go downtown Whitefish, and there are a lot of empty spaces there. There are a lot of empty spaces everywhere. And the stores that were just landmarks on the country landscape are gone. Joanne Shop closed. I don't know how many of you remember her burgers. That's been long gone. A lot of that, a lot of the reason for local commercial stuff is kind of going away with the online stuff. And I want that to be considered as part of this mixed land use concept. Are we going to end up with a lot of empty buildings? Because since COVID, more and more and more people are adopting that online, I'm going to buy it online. And young people buy it online. It's harder for me to, you know, my daughter always says, well, just get it online, Mom. And I'm used to like, I want to go touch and feel stuff. But that seems to be the trend of the future. And that, I think, needs to be a consideration before a lot more commercial is added. Because if you're talking about normal, regular things with all these other places delivering and Amazon distributions, I don't know that I particularly like it, but I think it is the wave of the future. And it's something that we need to consider in our growth plan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Whitney Beckham, Lupper Avenue here in Whitefish. And thank you for the meeting just prior to this. It was well-attended, as was our last Community Development Board meeting. I want to assure members of council and members of public that we are taking this seriously. We do read all of the material. And our direction from MLUPA was to prepare. So that's what we're attempting to do, is to prepare, prepare this document. Alan's doing a wonderful job. And we are trying really hard to incorporate all public comments. We now have three public comment sections in all of our working groups. And I just want to assure everyone that we are listening and we're preparing. So we thank you for your direction and everything that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Whitney. Thanks for your work as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Michael Hein, 612 Lupper. When one of the appointed boards adopts whole cloth, the recommendations of one specific business interest in the city, that appears to be a problem. When a 15-year veteran of the planning process resigns because it's not working, that seems to be a problem too. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Heberling, 42 Crane Marsh Way, Whitefish. And we just sat through an hour and a half meeting. And I am really struck by how very seriously every single member of the council has taken all these issues. I wish we could have continued for another five hours and maybe ironed out many of them, but we will be doing that over the next months. I want to say a couple things. I went back to MLUPA, and the council and the Planning Board, Citizens Development Board, have different duties. They have separate duties. The Planning Board, MLUPA uses the words Planning Commission, has specific duties, and they have 100% of those duties. They must do them. So, and one of the duties is to prepare a growth plan. Also, it said we must propose a growth plan. And then, in 2.1, only after consideration by and on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, only then does the city council adopt, revise, or reject the work of the Planning Board. So I thought it'd be good to clear that up a little bit. Then I did something after the last meeting. I do it for my own benefit. I recap the arguments. And I will send them to you. I would love to go through all of them. There are, but it's called Six Ways, the Heart of Whitefish version of the Economic Development Goals and Objectives, improves on the Planning Staff version. The Heart of Whitefish version largely embraces the work of the staff, but there are substantial changes. So there's six changes. First is no, I'm losing my voice, no to...
Oh, sorry. I was like, wow, that was kind of abrupt.
I'm old and I lose my voice easily. So no to adding 720 new business kinds. The staff version had a goal of providing a full range of goods and services. That means, a full range means 100%. And this goes back to the consultant's report, Table 5, where they found 720 business kinds Whitefish was lacking. So by continuing to propose this full range of goods and services, it means all 720 is the vision of the staff for the next 20 years. Well, that would be rapid, rapid growth. And that's one of the objections. The staff has never changed this language. So the Heart of Whitefish version took that out. Second one is yes to moderate growth, no to rapid growth. So the staff version can be viewed as proposing rapid growth, as I just discussed. And the Heart of Whitefish version says yes to moderate growth. And the visioning sessions were really clear on this. I went to two nights in a row when people were playing with their iPhones and voting on things. And one question was, what is the biggest threat to Whitefish? And the staff has put these into font size displays. So affordability was first, traffic was second, growth was third. But then there were two more called development and sprawl of a slightly smaller size. If you add those, perhaps growth is the greatest concern of the people at those visioning sessions. I didn't hear anyone complaining that the growth was not rapid enough. And so these people are saying that they want growth a little less than what they've seen. And so the Heart of Whitefish version goes to moderate growth. And no to box stores. As Al mentioned, there was almost no support for big box stores in Whitefish. And yet, the staff version says regulate big box retail. That means letting it in and then trying to regulate it. It's a slippery slope.
John, with all due respect, I appreciate the comments, but we're familiar with the changes that were made, with all due respect. And I think this would be more appropriately discussed at your Community Development Board meeting, if you don't mind.
Okay. That's fine. I realize these meetings get really long.
They can be. But thanks very much for your service on the board. Appreciate it. Who's next?
Hey, everyone. My name is Lena Galaz. I used to live in Whitefish. I would like to, but I cannot afford it. So I live in Columbia Falls, and my address is 1447 11th Street West. So I'm here as a community organizer with Flathead Democracy. I think, like from everything I heard in the last meeting, you guys really understand the gist of like the conflict, you know, that's taken place or that's come to a head in the content of this report. And so I think I just wanted to point out, you know, I look at a lot of national politics, but I also look at local politics, right? Because it's really important. This is where we live. Our kids go to school, we recreate and live here, live our daily lives. And so, you know, an oligarch, or an oligarchy, is a government in which a small group of people exercise control, especially for corrupt and selfish purposes. That's different from a representative democracy, which accounts for and honors the perspective of all its constituents. And so, you know, without going into great detail, I actually think that that is sort of presented to you here, which is, you know, what kind of government is the Whitefish City government? And obviously, our name and our organization is Flathead Democracy, so you can understand what our interests are as an organization that works across the Flathead. And we really just want to put the kind of like political power, and we want to empower people, working people, working families. There was a public input process that was like, from what I understand, really well-done from the city's perspective. And so, you know, our question is like, well, is the Heart of Whitefish conducting the public input process again? Or was the public input process done by the city? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena. Who's next?
Hey there. My name's Stephen Butters. Just one thing I wanted to bring up really briefly, and this you can look up statistics-wise online easily. Tourism at the border is actually down 20% right now since January, and we've lost out on $400,000 in our community in total currently. Again, you can look these statistics up online. This is just something to consider with what was just discussed, whether or not consideration needs to be laid out on the tourism industry in total right now, or if other things with more longevity need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dakota?
Hello again, Mayor and Council. My name is Dakota Whitman. I live at 937 Kalispell Avenue. And I just wanted to briefly expand on a couple points I wasn't able to in the work session. My first is I'd like to argue against this point, that a singular person can claim that they represent hundreds of people. I believe that this is fundamentally anti-democratic and privileges certain people over others. If we posit that a member of Heart of Whitefish, or Citizens for a Better Flathead, or any organization can have their voices heard by one person, then we are placing these people in inherently privileged position. That means that these people don't have to write comment, they don't have to show up, they don't have to fill out a survey, but their voices are considered to be heard. But if you are a member of the community who's not a part of these groups, and you still do those things, your voice is considered not heard. So I would urge that if these groups claim that their members are very concerned about these issues, they need to show up as individuals and write and participate like everyone else in the community does. This is supposed to be a democratic process, so it needs to be one person, one voice. And very briefly, I'd like to point out two edits Heart of Whitefish made that were not mentioned in the work session, that I think really display, you know, why I just can't believe that this was critically assessed as a document. The first one is that they claim that the median per capita rent is 800 a month, and they say Housing Whitefish has a data source for that. That number came from Housing Whitefish's number that an average two-bedroom apartment is 1,700 a month, and Heart of Whitefish assumed that every two-bedroom apartment has two people equally splitting the rent. That is not true. That is not an accurate number. Housing Whitefish will tell you that's not an accurate number. And I think that shows a lack of acumen in data interpretation and data analysis. If we want this to be a data-driven process, this needs to be conducted by people who know how to ask and interrogate data sources, not blindly believe it from a source that they're preferential to. And last point I'd like to hit is that Heart of Whitefish claims with no evidence, no source, nothing backing this claim up, that the housing crisis, quote-unquote, "may reverse because of remote workers going back to the office." COVID ended four or five years ago. There is no mythical tranche of remote workers that are going to leave and save us for million-dollar houses. If claims like these are going to be made, there needs to be sources to back them up. We need this to be a data-driven process if we want this to work. This cannot be based on people just saying things and then it being believed. Thank you.
Thanks, Dakota.
Good evening. My name is Terry Falk, F-A-L-K. I'm an elected representative in House District 10 in Kalispell, Montana. Would you like, I've not presented here before. Would you like my physical address?
If you don't mind, just for the record.
I don't mind at all. No problem. 57 Zach Joe Place, Kalispell, Montana.
Thanks, Terry.
Sure. Also, one more procedural question. Is this where I would comment on the Border Patrol, Whitefish City Police? Is it an open comment for basically anything?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Didn't want to speak out of turn. So that's the issue that I'm referring to. And I just want to make a couple comments. I noticed a lot of people in the room have gray hair like me, so probably they were raised with parents who placed a high value on law and obedience to the law, and understanding that we need to face consequences when we don't obey the law. I'm concerned about our society somewhat, this is not necessarily a comment on Whitefish, but just in general, where we somehow, some time, for some reason, the good guys seem like they've turned into the bad guys. And sometimes, it seems like the bad guys have turned into the good guys. And I'm just concerned about potential chaotic consequences of that. And I have a profound respect for what you guys do. I understand what position you're in. Certainly not here to tell you what to do, or not that I could. But I understand that you have to take a real good look at what is happening and how to respond to that. I think it would be a mistake at this point to apologize for doing something that I believe is the right thing in this case. I feel like also, as elected officials, it's so important that we take into consideration the safety and the peace and the prosperity and the protection of our citizens and our residents. Just because we have a free society, of course, doesn't mean we have the freedom to do whatever we want. We need to live within bounds. So I would just say, don't apologize for doing our job, for doing the right thing. And this is how we maintain a good society that's not chaotic. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Terry.
Howdy, y'all. Tran Seymour, Kalispell, Montana. I'm a Flathead native. That was an interesting comment. I just, I'm not going to take a whole lot of time on the whole Castillo Rodriguez thing, other than the fact that there's no way it wasn't racially motivated. There was no reason to call the Border Patrol on this guy. He had all of his ducks in a row. He did all of his papers in a row. I know it seems to be the contention of this board, that there was no racial motivation whatsoever, but the vast majority of the community seems to view that otherwise. So maybe we can just reevaluate from there as, you know, these fiascos continue to incite. The key arguments for this economic development plan involved things like, do we want to encourage new businesses to relocate here? Should we encourage businesses to typically pay higher wages? Does Whitefish have a balanced economy? Who are we asking these questions to? That's kind of something that I'm really curious about, because I can tell you right now that these questions aren't really being asked with a lot of the locals and residents in mind. I'll give you an example. When I was growing up here, I remember a lot of my mom and dad's friends saying things like, we don't really like the direction that Whitefish and the Flathead is growing and evolving. It's getting too hoity-toity. We're going to move to Eureka, or Libby, or Great Falls. And what they did is they took themselves out of the conversation. And when they took themselves out of the conversation, their places were filled by people from out of town who had the money to come here and start making this place what they wanted it to be. And that still happens all the time. People just remove themselves from the conversation because they don't like the way the conversation is going, rather than engaging in the conversation itself. And that is something that I see more and more. A lot of community members are getting kind of tired of doing, seeing happen. I think it's amusing that we're asking, is targeting primary job generating businesses and more goods and services accelerating growth? First of all, the key word here, or key phrase here, I think, is like, "primary job", because that indicates that in order to live here, one must have more than one job. We also said that 76% of the people in Whitefish don't live here. Why? It's because we can't afford to live here anymore. I drive by the house that I grew up in, and it's, it has been all but diminished to a fraction of what it was when my family owned it. And if it were to go on the market right now for rent, I can guarantee you, we'd be paying five times more than what my parents were paying on their mortgage. So I don't really understand, like, who these questions are being directed towards. It doesn't mean that we don't want to live here. It means that we can't. The report that you guys put out, it said it was sent to 28 agencies. Who are the stakeholders in those agencies? I did see a lot of frowns coming from over there when people were objecting. So I'm just going to make assumptions based on that. I won't voice them, but I'll just keep them in my pocket. Tourism is half of the economy, but also, who is that benefiting? Because it's clearly not the workforce who supports that tourism agency. Regarding the red marks, which I thought were just exemplary here, the red marks, we are revised to indicate locals who choose to drive out of town for necessary goods, removes language regarding deficit and affordable goods and services for locals. I'm not going to read all of these. But so what, if we vote, if we approve on that, what y'all are essentially voting for is you are removing truths. We're removing language from the website that states the truths of the economy that we live in, the environment that we live in, that yes, we do have to drive to Kalispell to get underwear. I'm sure there are people that come here who come with all of their underwear already packed. But like, why are we removing languages that can allow businesses who come here to better understand the economic environment in which they are about to start fostering, so that they can better foster the community in which they are a part of? To me, that seems like a no-brainer. I don't understand why we would remove the warning labels, when warning labels are specifically put in place to prevent stupid people from making stupid decisions. And I don't want anybody on this board, let alone anybody over here or in my community, to be a part of this stupid group of people making stupid decisions. Thank you very much.
Mayor, City Council. First of all, I just want to say thank you for hosting this. And thanks to Alan. I know he has a huge job trying to decipher MLUPA and incorporate that. Same to the Community Development Board. It's a huge task, and of course, comes with a lot of contentions. I'm here to support the Heart of Whitefish. They, I think, did a great job incorporating comments, and they were a stakeholder. The comments were, we, as I understand, able to be reviewed by the public. And they were, they shared them again at the meeting. I also want to note that CBF, as a representative of, I'm sorry, Cameron Dexter, 309 Hawthorne Avenue, Kalispell, as a representative of Citizens for a Better Flathead, we do submit our comments, not always on time by the deadline. I'm sure Alan wishes I did. But we do submit those comments, just like everyone else, and we do read through them. I want to note that we are trying to figure out where and how we can view the individual stakeholder comments that come in. I know there's a whole list of people, and I submitted FOIA for the public comments, but I have yet to see those. And maybe that's being worked on. And we just want to promote that we need transparency as we go through this process, because there's going to be a lot of public comment. There's going to be a lot of different viewpoints. But in order to come to a solution that we can all benefit from, I think it's really important that we all have a chance to view public comments that have been submitted ahead of time before the meeting, so we can all incorporate those. So thank you so much. I hope you have a good evening.
Thanks, Kim.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for all the work you do, everybody in here. I was shocked to see you move from that meeting immediately into this meeting. I had no idea. My name is Drew Rafkin. I used to live in Whitefish. Now I live at 723 Fifth Avenue East in Kalispell, because I couldn't afford it. I'm gonna possibly sound like the person that you think is exaggerating and saying the sky is falling, and maybe a year from now, if you remember what I say, you won't think that. I'm really concerned about how the city council, and the Border Patrol, and the police department work together. And the reason for that is, right now, friends of mine who are Latino are being targeted because that's what's being directed from above. My husband, who is not Latino, who's a naturalized citizen, has left the country and doesn't know if he's going to come back because he's afraid to be here, because he doesn't feel protected. He doesn't feel like he will be served with justice if the tides turn to his nationality. Maybe that's all I have to say. It's very frightening. And as somebody who grew up with nobody past my great-grandparents who were left alive, and my husband's family who escaped the communist revolution, and everybody that they left died, this doesn't feel safe. So I'm asking you to think about that, because someday, they're going to target somebody else. And if it's me, or my husband, or if it's one of you for some odd reason, although most people here are white, and like me, I can hide for a while. But my husband can't hide, and his side of the family can't hide, and my friends who are here can't hide. So what do they do? Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Good evening. I'm Ron Gerson, former resident of Whitefish and now retired to 9 Fourth Avenue East in Kalispell. Thanks for allowing me to address you. I've known most of you, or at least known of you, in one capacity or another for many years. And I haven't much intervened in your proceedings over the years. But tonight, I feel compelled to appeal to you on two intertwined issues, which are extremely near and dear to my heart. I wouldn't be here today if it weren't for the generosity and spirit of this country in opening its arms to welcome immigrants. In my case, two young people fleeing the oppressive Nazi regime. Nazi regime. Those two immigrants, who met, married, and begat, my sister and I, held a deeply profound respect and reverence for the democratic principles on which this country was founded. And I have no doubt, they're not just rolling in their graves, they're spinning at high velocity with what's happening in their adopted country. Even my low-profile father, I'm sure, would be at all the rallies and protests, and that's a large part of what inspires me as well. The government of the city of Whitefish must ensure that civil rights are preserved, that due process is respected, that everyone in this community is treated with respect and protected. There's no room for turning a blind eye to events in the comfort that it's happening to someone else. That's what happened in Germany in the '30s, and that could happen, indeed is happening, in the USA of today. And then, there was no one left to stand up for me when they came for me. Whitefish, as a community, has a history of gathering around, supporting and protecting those neighbors who are being attacked. This must not stop now. If indeed, you have the intention to make sure that that, that this attitude persists, in fact, as well as in spirit, you have an obligation to ensure that all parts of your government act in unison and clarity to achieve the same objective. There's no room for equivocation, for doublespeak, for hypocrisy, for obfuscation. Clarity is the order of the day. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
It's a doubleheader for me. Leonette Galaz, resident of Columbia Falls. I'm going to play a video really quick, and turn up the sound, so you can hear what happens. She says, "I haven't committed a crime."
No! What are you, what are you guys doing?
I want to talk with my lawyer.
No!
You need to let me review the warrant.
No! Mommy!
That's them breaking the glass of her car window.
You guys cannot take her, just because you guys want to!
Don't worry, my love, don't worry.
You guys are [BLEEP].
Calm down. Don't worry, my love, everything's going to be okay. Be careful. Is the car in park? Yeah, it's in park. Give yourself to your daughter, so you can get out, because there's glass everywhere. No, I'm going to keep my phone. Okay, slowly, slowly, be careful.
Don't grab her like that!
Now, they're handcapping her.
Don't grab her like that!
Don't worry. Everything's going to be fine.
Mommy, no! Mommy!
I trust you could hear that. What you just heard is the detainment of Noemi Berrios, in Maryland, by ICE, with no warrant, breaking the glass of her car, while her daughter cried for her mother. Noemi has no criminal record, she's an asylum seeker from El Salvador. Under the ICE Alternatives Detention Program, she has current work authorization. DHS alleges she's associated with the MS-13 gang, but there's no detention order, and there is no evidence provided by DHS to support that claim. This is similar to our community member, Becker Renjivo Del Castillo. When he was detained by ICE, there was no warrant, no evidence that he had broken any laws, and still to this day, no charges have been filed against him. I'm Mexican-American. I'm Latina. Exhibit A. My shirt says it, so it must be true. I live here. I see what's happening with very clear eyes. The people of Whitefish tell me how much they love my culture, music, food, art, language. You love for us to cook your food, take care of your kids, build your houses, serve your food, clean your houses, work at your businesses, but the minute we demand equality, no, that's too much. We are people. We are human, and we are good for more than just being your servants. We demand that you honor our rights to due process under the law, and our rights to equal protection. Stop pretending like the Border Patrol magically appeared. Border Patrol is acting on the direction of an authoritarian regime that is implementing racist immigration policies to pander to its political base, and it's working. Is that what we want to be a part of? Many of you agree that what's happening isn't right. I've heard you say it, people in this room. So, if you don't believe that this is right, be part of stopping it happening in our community. We demand the city of Whitefish immediately cease contacting or collaborating with Border Patrol for any interactions that do not involve potential felony-level violent crimes. We demand to see the training materials and programs in place for Whitefish PD regarding racial bias in policing. We also demand an investigation into the actions of Officer Hingis and disciplinary action as appropriate. We demand to see the training materials for Whitefish Immigration Matters, and demand that officers undergo regular training, and frequent training, that's sufficient for identifying lawful immigration status, so they don't need to rely on contacting Border Patrol to do so. We demand an apology from Chief Kelcher, and from the Whitefish City Council, to Mr. Becker Renjivo Del Castillo, and the entire community, for not adequately prioritizing this issue, nor sufficiently educating and training officers in order to prevent the irreparable harm that took place and should never, ever have occurred. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena.
Hi, my name is Lena Camaro. I am not Leonette. I know, that's confusing to some people. I didn't know what I was going to say today. Leonette said a lot of it, and I am speaking because I'm tired of letting other people speak for me, as is obvious by the fact that me and Leonette regularly get mistaken for each other, all the time. We are two of the most visible brown people in this valley. I'm afraid in Whitefish. Some of you guys know me, and that's why I'm here to talk. I have to think about what my hair looks like before I go into the stores. I don't normally look like this. I normally have my hair up, jacket on, looking as white as possible, because racial profiling exists in this town. I know you guys want to think that it doesn't. I don't want it to either, but you guys are in the very unique position to be able to do something about that. I can't make myself safer, I can't make my kids safer, but you guys can. You guys can ask for an investigation, you guys can release the body cam footage that we know exists. There's a lot that you guys can do. I'm afraid in your town, and you guys know me. How do you guys think that other people feel? People that don't have friends, that are regularly in these meetings, or my pack of friends in the back right now? If you want to think that your, your town is safe for brown people, my Blackfeet friend was raped in your parking structure. Please do the job that we can't do. You guys are the ones that can do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena.
Switch out to the reading glasses. Hello, my name is Rebecca Miller. I'm from Kalispell, Montana, and I am an immigration advocate here in the valley. I was last here to talk to you two weeks ago, and I thank you for the opportunity to do so again. When I came last to speak to you, I had read the police report from Mr. Renjivo Del Castillo's traffic stop. Having read it, I couldn't believe that much of the City Council, as did, spoke with such certainty that the matter was closed. Nobody ever has racial bias in the Whitefish Police Department, and nothing was improper in the stop. Now that everyone has had an opportunity to read the police report, because it was in the newspaper this week, and so I certainly hope that everyone has read it by now, you can see that it doesn't describe any reason for Border Patrol to be called, that I can see. There was, before it was released, it was like there was this curtain in front of it, and sort of this implication, there must be some awful secret that it's hiding, and you get it, and it's not that at all. The police officer described an irregular but legal car registration, that Becker spoke Spanish, seemed nervous, but turns out to have been an accurate way to respond to considering what happened. He had his driver's license, insurance, and car registration. He was stopped for a broken taillight. We know these facts by now. There was no reason, though, the police report shows, to presume that he was violating immigration law, nor was that really the business or jurisdiction of city police. As I noted in my last time, once a call was made to CBP, a domino effect is triggered, and the police officer loses control of what happens next. What happened next was terrifying, we know that. He was deprived of his liberty for a week. At the end of the last City Council, several of you had a lot of concern for the police officer, and compassion for how he may be feeling. Yet I didn't hear much about the, what it might feel like to go and be locked up in an ICE facility for six days. That's got to feel pretty bad. I'm not here to say that Officer Hingis is a Klansman, or, I mean, he's probably a pretty nice guy. I don't know. I don't know him. But the thing is, is that we all, white people like me, grow up with our brains imprinted with the stuff of unconscious bias. I'm a white person, it was imprinted on me too, and every day, I have to stop and resist it, and try to be a better person. The issue here is the impact that nice people can have, their decisions can have. So, I will wrap it up and just ask again, will the city please provide the public with the content of the training that officers receive on what constitutes reasonable suspicion or probable cause of a criminal immigration violation? Again, as I said last time, I understand you can't give me a list of like, 10, 15 things, and it's only going to be these 10, 15 things. I understand there's a spectrum of things. I want to understand what police officers are being trained in, and if they are being trained in it, then it is a coherent thing. And then, I will ask that the city will stop calling CBP. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Hey, guys, I'm back. First off, my apologies, this is my first time being here today, so this time, I'll give my address as well. Again, that's Stephen Butters. My address is 1035 Oakmont Lane, Columbia Falls. Regarding the second topic, I spoke initially on the first. This is specific to the second that we're addressing now. I'd like to just start with, my whole family's been involved in everything from military to federal law enforcement, to city law enforcement, my entire life and before. My grandfather, my dad's dad, was involved in the landing on Iwo Jima. He was on the second ship, and I would say the third ship, but the second ship sunk. He was given the same medal that the captain was, for communicating the rescue of that second ship. My whole family has been staunch Americans, conservative Democrat, you name it, but we stand here for America. I have done anti-human trafficking work with my father in Seattle. I know more about gangs and what's going on here than I came here knowing about ICE's actions, if I'm being honest. I'm at the point where not only is my father, who has worked for the US government in various routes and places, my entire life and most of his, wants me out of the country, but he also no longer stands for what this government is doing. Regarding Bekar's detainment, I've read the police reports. I've done my own research and all kinds of stuff elsewhere, outside of the state. So, things that caught my attention were things that differentiated from various accounts we received. The first ones being that Border Patrol was not needed for translation. In the police report itself, it states that Border Patrol, they're actually assisted in the translation. It's in the second page. Another portion is that Border Patrol was called, according to the police report, not for the translation. We don't know whether or not that's what happened, we don't have the body cam footage, but it does state, or say, that they were called because there was an immigration violation problem in the Flathead Valley. Now, courtesy of my mom's side, I speak a little bit of Croatian, including some insults in the jass. I can say, for just clarity's sake, I have gone through blasting Nordic and Slavic music. I have insulted people in Croatian, I've spoken Croatian, I've never once had anything checked. The only difference between Bekar and I is, I'm white. I'm very white. I glow in the sunlight. So, anyway, that's, that was the second topic I wanted to broach, and thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Stephen.
Hi, I'm Jenny Padlo. I live at 476 Labrie Drive, Whitefish. I am in support of law enforcement tonight. I wrote something out, it's, I'm going to read it, but before I read it, I just want to say about, like, my personal experience with several police officers in this community is nothing but huge heart and care. And I have had to call the police more than I ever thought I would have to, and I have been just astonished at the integrity. I, I'm just really impressed with what I've experienced, and so, it's hard for me to hear this stuff. So, okay, I address you today regarding recent protests and demands concerning the detention of, can I just call him Becker? These are my beliefs, and I go back kind of deep, because after my school board experience, where I wrote a very nasty letter to the school board, which was actually a form of reactive abuse, I was, I felt very abused when I went through that meeting, and many things were lied about. Anyways, I'm, I'm over it, it's behind me, but it caused me to start paying attention deeply to the activist community in Whitefish, and I think it's a danger. I think it's a danger to the fabric, I think it's a poison. And so, what the activists are doing today, over this issue, and it could be any issue, they are conflating what they call concerns with actual unlawful violations. They sent out a prompt to their associates to guide communication at this meeting. In that prompt, they write, "We still have not been told twice, absent this information, and we are concerned." So, they admit they are missing facts to make a determination. Creatively, they leverage the absence of facts to justify a concern, a concern, and then claim this abstract concern justifies concrete demands. There's a podcast-level amateur investigation, one they don't have the authority to pursue. Because they don't have authority, they counterfeit authority through implied virtue in the word "concern." They imbue a maximum amount of virtue on their concern, which then justifies basically anything they want. In this case, it's subversion of law enforcement. Also implied in their concern is the demand that we must all accept the premise their position is of moral superiority, though no sup-, no position of moral superiority has ever come to exist through a ceaseless fabrication of facts. This is not about Becker. It's a power play, and a response gives them the power struggle they desperately need to launder themselves into legitimacy. Now, I'm going to go into something that's a little deeper, and historical, and possibly offensive, but I feel like this community needs to discuss it. Furthermore, it's important to acknowledge the broader context in which these events are unfolding. In 2016, Whitefish faced a situation where an injustice was used to legitimize actions by an activist group appearing to be random citizens opposing white supremacy. This group went on to target members of the community who oppose or challenge any Democrat positions for nearly the next decade, well after the paper tiger of white supremacy in this community was shredded. They exploited the incidents, the incident to launder themselves into a social position of authority, essentially a gang of self-deputized thought police, roving around town, community forums, influencing politics with bombastic conviction, a young cavity in a tooth, so to speak. The current situation with Becker bears striking similarities. The same group, or their ideological successors, appears to be leveraging this incident to regain influence and deepen control over the community's political and cultural landscape. Their tactics involve manufacturing crises to rally support and delegitimize opposing viewpoints. I urge the council to observe what the activists are attempting to do with Becker's situation, not as a standalone event. not as a standalone event, but as a continuation of the local cultural rot this group seeded in 2016. Two rots don't make a right. As they attack law enforcement in Whitefish, the decay they initiated years ago endeavors to deteriorate our systems by demanding the council bend to their will and actively assist in undermining law enforcement. Some council members have shown fear and indicated submissive inclinations to these activists. Council members are being battered with a set of false facts, intense dishonest virtue signaling, and lots of emotion meant to signal counterfeit conviction, cloaked in fever pitch urgency designed to cause dysregulation and chaos this group requires to thrive. The council should resist all pressure to adopt or entertain a false set of facts in order to subdue this beast. The activist group, who I affectionately call the Peanut Gallery, signals a confidence that the council will comply, based on the history that the council has benefited from their social intimidation and oppression of political opposition, and they interpret this as a currency for the council, perhaps even a debt to them, because there has been nearly a decade void of meaningful political pushback in Whitefish. This is because conservatives fear being smeared as racists or bigots, which I most certainly will be after reading this. At any rate, they appear to believe they derived a counterfeit authority stemming from the 2016 incident that they now wield against the council itself. To engage this hard-left activist group is to sign a death warrant for Whitefish. It is nihilism. Any engagement on their terms, their false facts, is legitimizing them once again, only this time not just as thought police.
Point of order, you did read from our rules for civil dialogue, and this is violating it in many different ways.
I agree. Please wrap up, if you don't mind.
This time, not as thought police, this time it will be at the expense of our just, upright, honest, caring, lawful, hard-working, dedicated law enforcement.
I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna cut this off, ma'am.
Okay.
Please.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I just want you all to see how it's a continuation of activism.
Good evening. My name's Kim Morisaki. I live at 1329 Bald Eagle Loop in Kalispell. I hadn't, I'm just here to actually talk to you about some affordable housing, but I, as I was listening to this, I thought, I have some own personal experience as a white girl from the Flathead Valley who's been here for five generations. I actually lived in Japan for 11 years and have a lot of experience being the foreigner on a work visa who stands out in every situation, and also didn't speak Japanese very well. And while I lived in Japan, I had a work visa, and then I got married, that's where I got that crazy last name, and married a Japanese guy and got a visa to live there. There were plenty of Americans who were not there, who overstayed their work visas, shall we say. The thing that happened in Whitefish is so tragic, and the reason I wanted to talk with you about it is because if I had been living in Japan, and what happened to Becker had happened to me, living in Japan as a foreigner who stood out and couldn't speak Japanese, it would have ruined my feelings about Japan forever. And I think that if it was happening as regularly in Japan as what is happening now in the United States, there would have been a huge outcry from the American government about what was happening to American citizens in Japan, the way they were being treated. Fortunately, none of that happened. And I married a Japanese guy and convinced him to move to Montana with me about, gosh, 23 years ago. And about 20 years ago, he became a United States citizen, and, great. The problem is, he's bald, he works, he's a contractor, he's got a goatee, and he could just as easily look like he is from Mexico or South America as he looks like he's from Japan. And his English isn't that great, although he does get by. I am terrified for him. I make him carry his passport with him everywhere he goes. And that shouldn't be the way anybody who lives and works in this community should have to feel. So, I just wanted to share that perspective with you. My husband and I are invited to a friend's wedding in Mexico. We're not going because I'm afraid what it would take for us to get back into the country. So, just a little more food for thought as you're thinking about how Whitefish is represented in this situation. Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Kim.
Hello, my name is Patty Johnson, 405 Blanchard Lake Drive, Whitefish. I also want to speak about what happened with Becker, but first I want to say that I too support our law enforcement. I've had great interactions with them. I support our city council, and I believe wholeheartedly in those aspects of respectful dialogue that you talked about at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor, and I think this is an ongoing conversation, and that it would be wise for all of us to just keep talking about these kinds of issues. I am a longtime educator. I have worked in schools for a long time, from preschool all the way up to high school. And at my current job, we talk to the kids a lot about the concept of growth mindset. I'm sure most of you have heard or read about growth mindset before, and the idea is with growth mindset is that we want to have brains that grow, not brains that are fixed. And one of the big tenants of growth mindset is how we view mistakes. A person with a fixed mindset is going to dig in when a mistake is made, and they're just gonna dig in, they're gonna shut down, and they're not gonna want to talk about that mistake, often because they feel shame, or they feel like they did something wrong. And something we try to really instill in our students is that mistakes are opportunities for growth, and isn't that exciting, that that is the way our brains actually grow? And I'd like to kind of apply this to this situation with Becker. We can either have fixed mindsets, and we can all say, "Everything we did, everything we've done is just what it is, and we're not gonna talk about it anymore, and we're gonna pull a curtain down, and we're not gonna share anything, and not going to engage in a lot of dialogue." Or, we can say, "Hey, this is an opportunity for growth. This is an opportunity for us, as a community, to grow and to share and to listen respectfully to different viewpoints," which I like to think that I'm a person that's pretty open to different viewpoints. And I, when we talk to kids about this, I always think that I'm asking an awful lot from kids, because it's really easy to just omit something or not be really clear about something and let assumptions just stand. And yet, I feel like I need to live my life, professional and personal life, in a way that honors what I'm asking kids to do. We tell kids honesty is the most important thing, being open is the most important thing. And the fact is, we all, every single one of us, makes a mistake at work and in our personal lives, but we're gonna talk about work right now. We all make mistakes at work, probably on the daily. Some of them are big, some of them are small. We often have opportunities to correct that, and I think that it's really important for us to have the integrity and the ethics to be able to talk more openly about something that happened and to take corrective actions if those are needed. I don't think, I'm gonna make an analogy to something that happens in the medical field. There's a lot of research that shows that if doctors just say what they actually did and apologize for it, they are much less likely to get sued for that. I think we have a lot of big-hearted people, both in the council, the police department, all the other departments, and in the community in Whitefish, and if we're open about our dialogue, I think that that will progress us and help us grow a lot more. Obviously, all I have to go from is the report that was in the Daily Interlake about what happened, but when I read something that says there are a lot of issues with immigration in the Flathead County as a reason or an explanation about how things progressed, that reads to me as bias. Obviously, I would love to engage more and listen more to a dialogue around that, but that will take transparency from the police department, from the council, to really kind of dig into those things and to be able to have more conversations around it. The other thing I just want to say on the land use and the growth policies is, this is just an anecdote, but I went into Sportsman's the other day. So I live in Whitefish, I have a 10-year-old. I went into Sportsman's because he lost his soccer shorts, and he had soccer practice or a soccer game, and I needed shorts like now. And I looked around, and all I could see was kids bathing suits. There were no other kids' clothes. So I said to the people at Sportsman's, "Are you gonna get some more kids' clothes in?" And they said, "No, we're not, because everybody goes to Kalispell." And I said, "Well, we have to go to Kalispell if there's no kids' clothes in Whitefish." So, I would really encourage the council to think about expanding businesses that actually help those of us who live in Whitefish, as opposed to having great stock just for tourists. Thanks.
Thanks, Patty.
Cameron Dexter, 309 Hawthorne Avenue, and I'm gonna speak as a private citizen now. To be honest, I did not know enough about this situation before these folks came and spoke, but I will tell you that I'm a lawyer, and though I do not practice, I did endure way too many years of civil procedure and crime and immigration, and this is not a new thing. There is always police brutality, there is always people doing the wrong thing, and especially in this time and this age under this administration, we cannot support it. We cannot turn a blind eye, and I think that you need to show up for the people in this community and support the people that came here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the perfect intro. I live here, and I am concerned. I also do usually carry my passport around with me now. Sorry, my voice is shaking. I got pretty heated, listened to some things, but I came here mostly to listen. I also looked into, just like word on the street, what was the paper saying about this situation, what was reasonable concern. I have pretty good research skills, could not find it. And, oh, sorry, I'm Isabella Brown. I live over on Colorado, across from the Aqueduct. Sorry. But I was mostly intending to listen, but I did hear some things that I do think would be great. A, full transparency, love it. Also, yeah, in this environment, you know, I have a privilege of being a veteran, but like, I still have never had the privilege of calling the cops and thinking that they were gonna be friendly. So, in my experience, the fact that he was nervous, duh, totally. That makes sense. Anytime the lights turn on, even if it's not for me, I know that I'm doing okay and I get nervous. That's a real thing. So, I want to say, like, the impact to nice people, I think I'm pretty nice, and I do think it's impacting me, because I do know whenever I go, I, full disclosure, I do do voter registration, it is nonpartisan, but whenever I go out of town to do it, to Kalispell or Columbia Falls, I usually try to come back before dark, because I know, like, you know, affordable housing is a big factor. I didn't, I had a taillight out, and I couldn't afford to pay for it until the next paycheck, so I was just trying to make sure to come home early so I wouldn't get stopped, because I knew it was gonna be a whole thing, even if it was just my stress levels. It was gonna be scary, and I didn't want that. I don't have the privilege, I work two jobs, I can't spend a week in detention while they just sort things out. I, you know, maybe it's just my algorithm as a Hispanic woman to get it, but I do get stories to where I see people who are getting cavity searched, and they're like military spouses, like, that's insane. And I personally cannot afford that trauma in my life. So, it sucks that I have to have this extra stress upon my regular stress. Like, it's, I'm respectfully, I don't see a lot of brown faces up here, so I'm just gonna let you know, from the perspective of somebody who is right across, right across the way, living here and just trying to survive in my one-bedroom condo with my partner and two dogs, it would be great if y'all could put in some implicit bias training, because I can't afford that smoke. I just, I would love, I would love for y'all to just do it, even if you don't think it's gonna do much, it would be great. And yes, you should apologize, because respectfully, y'all did fumble it. Like, that was pretty clear in the public outcry. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but have a good day.
Hi, my name's Danielle Tui. I don't live in Whitefish anymore, I live in the county. However, we own the subway in Whitefish, also all the subways across the valley besides Evergreens, so I have a vested interest in Whitefish. I am here to express my concern at the Whitefish Police Department's handling of racial bias, but more so the implications of our community, sorry, for our community of Whitefish Police Department's relationship with Border Patrol. First, in terms of racial bias, it is clear at this point that Whitefish Police Department lied to my community about racial bias in Becker's case. They guaranteed that wasn't the cause for calling Border Patrol over and over again, that they had probable cause. Newly released evidence from the traffic stop proves that there was no probable cause. It is possible that Officer Hingis is not generally racist, but made a terrible, life-changing mistake due to the current pressures of the climate today. Could Whitefish Police Department have tried to handle that internally while covering him publicly? Also possible. If that's the case, that's a lot of mistakes, and I expect Whitefish Police Department to make a full, clear, public apology, including an explanation of how they will avoid further mistakes like this. The only reason I even offer this bit of grace is because it does appear that since this case, they have changed policies and behaviors and are not currently working with Border Patrol. I don't know if that will continue. I am also here because I met Officer Hingis when I performed a First Amendment audit at Border Patrol. They failed miserably and called Whitefish Police Department on me and demanded that they arrest me. Unbeknownst to Border Patrol, we could hear everything they said through their door. Border Patrol went on and on, close to an hour, about how they are a federal organization and Whitefish Police Department had to follow their orders, regardless of if it violated our rights. They said immigrants are rapists without qualifications. They attempted to bully Whitefish Police Department into clearly violating our First Amendment rights. To his credit, Officer Hingis in this situation refused. The Border Patrol officer was very angry about that and then attempted to intimidate me. He was twice my size, he tried to get into my space. Officer Hingis had to calm him down, I suppose. Border Patrol and ICE across the country are attempting to bully local police into doing their dirty work. So why I'm really here is to warn you. With zero experience in organizing and zero warning, we fought Border Patrol and we won. We've had over a month now to organize. We are a grassroots organization. We have endless amounts of heads. Every day we go larger and stronger, and especially since this case occurred, we've seen exponential increases. We have lawyers, doctors, teachers, religious leaders, military members, every kind of possible leader, community possible leader, community leader you can imagine fighting next to us now. You may have noticed our Border Patrol protests got smaller. That isn't a lack of interest. That's a strategy. If Border Patrol or Whitefish Police Department violates community members' rights again, you will see how much we've grown. We will not be stopped. We don't have experience and if you make us do this, mistakes will be made. We have courage and strength and you'll see it. You have options right now. I've seen the city of Whitefish come together to fight for our community before. When Richard Spencer and his white supremacist followers attacked our community, we stopped them in their tracks. They tucked tail and hid. We'll do it again with or without your help. I'm sure you've seen videos now of rogue law enforcement in masks refusing to share names, violating people's rights, and communities are standing up. Civilians are fighting back against rogue law enforcement in full battle gear. I am a mother, a business owner, a farmer, a substitute teacher. I stood up to a Border Patrol guy twice my size and I will do it again and again and again as long as it takes. And I have an army of people behind me that are going to do the same thing. So I am here to tell you that I know my community. We're not going to bend a knee to fear tactics. We will stand up. We will fight back. We won't stand back and watch. Whitefish is an uncomfortable place and I don't envy you, being unlucky enough to be the ones where Border Patrol is located. But it's also an opportunity for this town, same as we did with Richard Spencer and his white nationalists, to show our neighbor's country and the world what we stand for. And you all have a part in that for better or worse. My demand is that is twofold. One, that Whitefish Police Department not only stands up and shows great strength by apologizing and then continues on to publicly stand up against Border Patrol in support of the constitution of this country. I demand that the city clearly and with great strength does the same and that you both hold each other accountable to do so. No one can give Becker back the extreme violation of his rights. What you can do is definitively and intentionally move forward to ensure this never happens again. Because I can promise you that if you don't, we will. And this community is strong enough to do that with or without your help. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
Good evening, everyone. John Ratka Skinner from Marion, resident of Marion. I wanted to maybe perhaps bring some more technical items to y'all's attention. Hopefully they would further some of the discussion that you have perhaps with the city manager or the chief of police. Some of the concerns that we've brought up are, is there training materials? Do the police officers routinely receive training every two years, every one year, or as I likely suspect, they simply sign an acknowledgement that they've read that section in the handbook? And so that would definitely be a suggestion that if the policies have changed over a period of time, is there actual real training and are those available, the training materials? I think they would be. That doesn't seem to be a personnel issue specific to any one individual. So I certainly hope that y'all will ask about those training materials. Again, when I spoke two weeks ago, I did read the incident report before I spoke. I also kind of got the impression that most of y'all did not, which is fine, but luckily that has been published by the Daily Inner Lake. I'm not trying to pick on anyone, but I would like to just clarify some points. And so very respectfully, Deputy Mayor Sweeney, at your closing comments last time, you had made some comments indicating that there was no indication that he had been stopped because he was brown or Spanish-speaking. And again, that is not an attack. What I would like to clarify is what we are really saying, and maybe he was stopped because he was brown. But again, I think that we can say, like you said, that there's no indication at this time. I think what we are trying to say, and if that was not clearly communicated previously, was that the decision, the discretionary decision to call Border Patrol during that stop was in fact because he was brown and spoke Spanish. So I did want to clarify that and I do appreciate your input from last meeting, but I do think that that is a very important distinction to make. Moving on again, I'm not picking on anyone. Councilmember Quinell, is that correct? Okay. And I believe you had made the comment, "Well, I've been stopped before and nobody's ever called Border Patrol on me. Why did we call Border Patrol on this person during a routine traffic stop?" That was you, yes? Okay, perfect. And that's a great question. So I would hope that you've read the incident report. And when I read the incident report, I think the conclusion that we would draw is, well, because he was Hispanic and spoke Spanish and very brown. I didn't see anything suspicious in that report. The officer made note that this individual was nervous, but the officer also made note that he wasn't able to communicate probably at all, but at least very well with this individual. So again, as somebody who is bilingual and speaks Spanish and has the cultural competency, I'm going to read my interactions with Spanish-speaking Latinos probably very differently in live time than an officer that doesn't speak Spanish. So was Becker nervous? Maybe. There are probably a lot of white folks that get nervous when they get pulled over as well. It's not great to get a parking ticket or speeding ticket. So again, I think the answer to Councilmember Quinell's question, which was a very great question last time, is absolutely this was racial profiling. I would also probably, I'll try to move it along, but I think there's been some comments that people, there are plenty of immigrants in the valley who, you know, support the work of Border Patrol or the police and they don't see the problem. I think maybe it's worth pointing out that people who have accents that are white will probably also not be treated the same way in a traffic stop. Wrapping that portion up, I think that if you have read or could reread the policies on bias in policing and the immigration policy, when I read all that and the incident report, I very much plainly feel that the policy of the police was violated. The officer clearly violated those policies. So again, you know, there are individuals that I hope you're able to talk with, but for me, when there's a clear violation of policy, there should be some sort of investigation or action taken on that. And from the information I have right now, I don't feel anything substantive has taken place. You know, I think we've been at this for three weeks, excuse me, six weeks, three meetings. You know, I think the next step, are we going to be looking at more material that comes out? In four or six weeks, are we going to be reviewing the police stop footage together? You know, I think now is sort of the time to maybe turn the ship and say, there is valid concerns here. There isn't just nothing. Let's actually talk about what this policy is and what's going on. One of the things that concerned me was, I don't remember which meeting it was, but the police chief indicated that Border Patrol had come out and given training to do two different shifts. That's very concerning. It's also incredibly one-sided. So last year, for example, through my community advocacy, I worked to provide approximately 60-ish immigrants in our community with connections to legal resources through legal filings. I'm not just some nut, you know, off the street. I mean, this is what I've been doing for three years with people in the Latino community. The messaging, now I was not present at that training with Border Patrol and I certainly hope that there's a record of what the content of that training is, but I can tell you through my national associations and my advocacy, the language that is coming out of Border Patrol is going to be very different than what you hear from community advocates and immigration lawyers. And so I would very much ask that you also invite the community to have that training with the police as well. One thing is the day after, excuse me, I'm getting over being sick, so my mouth is super The day after Becker's encounter with Whitefish Police and later Border Patrol, I was at a Latino family's house doing some of their immigration paperwork with them. And there happened to be a police stop outside of their residence. This was not Whitefish. It was another jurisdiction. And so, you know, a community member contacted me. It was a Latino. I went out there. That police officer with very much an appreciation for the environment chose not to call Border Patrol. Calling Border Patrol on people, even if people do or do not have certain forms of identification for traffic stops, I mean, I think really at this point is negligent. You know, that really puts people in danger. So again, we do have, and so what I was able to do during that traffic stop, I was able to interpret for that officer. The officer was also using, you know, his phone translator. Again, that officer made a very direct decision not to loop in Border Patrol because it really was not necessary. And so I think there is a very big discrepancy in what I encountered in a police stop the next day with another jurisdiction and what happened with Becker. So again, I, at this point, do anticipate that there is going to be a call for some sort of working session. I really think that there needs to be an actual thoughtful evaluation of the policy and how we work with Border Patrol. The only thing that I can understand is that we've decided to call a supervisor at some point in that interaction in the future to see if that's warranted. But again, that criteria, I don't know what that criteria is. I'm not sure that anyone can articulate that today anyway. And again, that's also very concerning. So again, you know, I thank you for letting me speak. I mean, I guess the next step is are we going to be looking at the police recording in four, six, or eight weeks? Or are we going to start now to ask those questions and make sure things like this don't happen again? Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jacob Courtford, 535 Colorado Avenue. I am the son of Joe Courtney. Some of you might know, he likes to make himself appear at city council meetings and stuff and hold everybody accountable for zoning and, you know, some of the stuff that the more wealthy folks around here get away with that the rest of us don't. And he's moved out of town. I've moved into town. We've switched houses. The only reason I can afford to live here is because I'm living in my childhood home with my whole family. So now I'm here to hold you accountable. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but jeez, after listening to all of this, I feel like something needs to be said from inside me. So I did not get the memo for the, I don't know, the Peanut Gallery meeting and I wasn't sent by Antifa, but I believe very strongly in social justice and genuinely in the town that I grew up in. I grew up in here, maybe a little privileged and blinded to what was going on with some of my other friends. And so I think I grew up with a view of this town as a very, very loving, kind, inclusive, and friendly place. It wasn't till, you know, around high school, I started seeing my friends have interactions with cops, you know, at a party or this or that. And I started kind of watching the Whitefish Police Department follow friends around, like cars around during lunch and stuff like that. And so, I mean, there's a, there's a few, there's a few things that I felt had changed. And then I left, I came back and I wish this town was what it was when I was a kid. I wish it was the like fairy tale land that it was when I was a kid. But society's changed, this country's changed, and this town has changed a lot since I was a kid. And I don't expect it to go back to that, but I really expect our morals to go to where we all hope it would be, which would be a loving, kind, and inclusive place. I'm just going to talk really quick on the housing issue because we all know that in recent years, money has really infiltrated this town. People with money, money moving from those people to, I don't, I don't know. I don't know all the specifics, but we can all feel it. Everybody who works dishwasher job at Craggy Range can feel it. Everybody that plays music on the street and has all of the businesses around them not want them there can like, can feel that. I mean, we, we got rid of the, there was like a rule against busking for a while, which a lot of the, like the train hoppers used to play on the street. And we got rid of that for the same kind of reason that Kalispell City Council put out their giant piece about homelessness and how that's the big issue. And I think we all know that the big issue is the bigger money that is involved here and is influencing stuff that's outside of a lot, a majority of our hands. And one of my, like just small examples in relation to that was the proposed idea of something low-cost housing north of the Viaduct, down towards Lodge. And to my understanding, that got axed pretty quick because some of the people with, you know, fiscal pull down there didn't like that and didn't want that. And that seemed like, seems like that's all that it takes to get rid of something that would be beneficial for the majority of the lower class and the middle class around here. Lastly, I'm going to talk on the situation with the police because...
Jake, if you don't mind just speeding it up a little bit. We have a whole agenda to still get through.
Solid.
For you and others that wish to comment.
Yep. I, I will not speak to my own experience because I've, I've felt it. I've had friends here that have felt it. And I witnessed an episode a couple of years ago where one of my friends was harassed for her color on the corner right outside this building. Somebody got in her face and screamed some pretty obscene stuff to her because of the color of her skin. And I, to my understanding, our police officers let that intoxicated man go on his way home with zero repercussions or anything. And that feels pretty slanted to me. So I guess I'm just going to leave this with, it's up to us to make this what we, this town what we want and not falling to the outer pressure from bigger administrations and stuff and not falling to the bigger money, I think is exactly what's going to do that and listening to constituents. Everyone else here that's spoken has said more than I could even. So no one is illegal on stolen land.
Thanks, Jake. Hi to your dad for us.
Oh, I will.
I'm going to call on this gentleman since you've already had an opportunity to comment.
Hello, Council Mayor. Name is Ian Fleming. Formerly lived here in Whitefish, but moved down to 249 Reserve Place in Kalispell. I was here originally to talk about government policy and procedure, but I figured I'd throw my hat in the ring. I hope you'll forgive me if I hang onto this one, though. This is a really a challenging and troubling problem, I think, and we're all wrestling with this at this moment of what we do in the face of all of these different crises that we're faced with. I would encourage everybody to think about this as we review what is going on in our community with sort of remembering what the scale of failure might be. If I send a text message to my colleague and accidentally say the wrong name or spell somebody's last name wrong for who is coming to an event with us, maybe their name badge is spelled wrong. That's embarrassing and it should be. But they're not going away for a week. They're not missing work for a week. We need to be thoughtful and cognizant of the scale of errors and what that means for people's lives when we're making decisions. And I don't think that undermines what brave work, the great work that people are doing. I think that we just need to make sure that we understand that and hold them to a responsible standard at that level. Government policy, procedures, stuff like that. I originally came here to talk about that. I do hope that I'm not trying to tell staff how to do their job. I was really grateful when Alan presented what Missoula had done in terms of demonstrating what these different types of... what these different types of areas look like to people. I think that that is really important to have these discussions, that we have shared language to have these discussions. Because I don't know, if you've ever had a discussion with an economist, when you're not an economist, they say words that you have no clue what they mean and/or they say the same words and they mean completely different things. We need shared language to have these deep discussions, especially when we're trying to have dialogue about what the future of our community looks like. So I would implore that something like that is worked into this process in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ian. I'm going to temporarily switch up the agenda. We have someone in the audience that would like to present on item 9B. It's a letter from Glacier Nordic Club regarding the Big Mountain Trailhead grooming barn site, if you don't mind. Jenny, that'd be great. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Hi, everybody. This is Jenny Bender. I live in Kalispell, actually, but I'm representing Glacier Nordic Club today as executive director. These are all very important conversations, but I have quite a different topic to address. Shift in, if you can bear with me, everybody. Thank you for your time. You know, as a reminder, we groom a lot of trails, we have youth Nordic programs, and we run the shop at the Whitefish Lake Golf Course in the wintertime for rentals and lessons to the public as a nonprofit. My purpose is just to give a project update on a groomer barn building that we are working on with Whitefish Legacy Partners and the city. It'll be on the city easement up at the Big Mountain Trailhead. We've been working with legacy partners to improve our facilities up there and are finally able to say that we have agreed on a site for the storage area. This is, the Big Mountain Trailhead is on Flathead County land, but it's owned by the resort and with public, public access via an easement with the city of Whitefish. So that's why I'm here. Also, just from an update from a standpoint of history of this project, we've been in these discussions since 2018 for this project up at the Big Mountain Trailhead. And at that point, about in 2019, we put in electrical and gravel, and we've had temporary storage for grooming equipment there ever since. And paused efforts with leadership transition, and now we're retaking up the project now with site analysis and such, making sure we're doing our due diligence. So from a update, if anyone does have any questions about this project, we hope to go forth with working on the lease agreement and the construction agreement and addressing any changes in the recreation.
Any questions for Jenny? Steve?
I don't have a question, Jenny. I just have a comment. I just want to offer my sincere appreciation for how long you've been sticking with this and the ups and downs of this entire project, and it's glad that we finally have settled on something and we're going to have some, you're going to have some improved ability to take care of the equipment that costs a lot of money to take care of and run throughout the winter. So thank you for sticking with it.
Much appreciated.
And thanks, Justin, too. I see you're online, so.
Yeah, Justin's our board treasurer. He's also running the committee to help with this project, and so we're getting lots of professional advice as we move forward with, with the proper protocol. I appreciate you guys and your support and, and thank you for letting me give you this update. If you have any questions on this process at all, feel free to reach out.
Andy?
Yeah, I'll just make one quick comment. As watching this come through the LLAC and through Trail Ops Committee over the last seven years now, I'm glad that we ultimately ended up finding a spot, which was the spot we had originally. But what I want to really compliment Jenny and Jesse on is they went through a very thorough site analysis despite the fact that we kind of all knew that that was going to be the spot ultimately, but they went through a very thoughtful analysis of all of the other potential sites, and we came back to the spot that was the one that it should have been all along. And every time I go up to that trailhead, which I go up there quite a bit, like several times a week, and I see the groomer just sitting out there all by itself, kind of with his back end down, I'm sad. So let's hope we get money raised and we get it done soon. So anyway.
Thanks, Andy.
Our grooming staff will be thrilled. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jenny. On that note, I'm kind of reading the tea leaves. We're going to go ahead and recess for about seven minutes. We'll reconvene here in about seven minutes.
Going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Is there any additional public comment? And please keep it brief respectfully.
I am here in City Council members. My name is Britt Cooper, 1400 Wisconsin Avenue, and I did not bring a paper to make notes, so I will keep it promised to two minutes regarding this issue of a law enforcement officer. You've heard from a faction of people here, majority that spoke are not or do not reside in Whitefish, so they're coming in from other areas. I don't envy your position here because I'm looking at both perspectives. But I think you have an obligation to respect our law enforcement agency. The faction that spoke is, I believe, a faction that would defund the police, disband ICE and Border Patrol, and I think the country as a whole has spoken that we are a land of law and order, and that is clear. They serve a point in keeping our society safe and a wonderful country such that it is. I felt I was called a racist by an individual. I'm not racist. I live in Whitefish out for years. I don't know anybody that's racist, yet it seems as though Whitefish is now a racist community. I don't see it. I think you have an obligation to support our law enforcement of Whitefish. I don't think an apology is necessary. My two cents worth. Thank you.
Thanks, Britt. Michelle, anyone online wishing to provide testimony? Three minutes. We have a whole agenda to still get through, so please, out of respect for the council's time, be.
Hello. Hello, better. For the record and for my safety, Z 418 East Second Street in Whitefish, and unlike Johnny, the nut off the street, but really the nut on the corner, if you ask some people, for the record. Okay. By the way, people, no one has said it yet. Happy Pride Month. Happy Pride Month. Hello, Whitefish? Happy Pride Month. Where is the flag? Where is the proclamation? Happy Pride Month. Okay. As our community's most visible activist, visitors often ask me about the political climate. My usual answer is Whitefish is the blue island of sanity in the crazy red sea of Trumfuckistan County. However, as a result of you closing ranks in regards to the recent incident of bias-based policing, I am rethinking that characterization. Steve, your initial public remarks were encouraging, but you have since backtracked. Rebecca, your empathy is without question, but you are conflict averse. Ben and Frank threading the needle, and G-Man perennially, proudly planted firmly on the wrong side of history. John, crickets. We are at an inflection point. Other community members have articulated specific demands. I only ask you to be better. Be better. Be that blue island of sanity. Thank you, and cheers, queers.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. Are there any volunteer board reports from the council? Not seeing any. You do have the consent agenda that contains the meeting minutes from May 19th. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Sweeney. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed like sign. The motion does carry unanimously, which brings us to our one and only public hearing, item 6A, ordinance 25-6, amending Title VII, Chapter 2, Section 2, snow and ice removal of Whitefish City Code. Maria.
Good evening. I will make this as quick and painless as possible. My staff report is on page 81 of your packet. Whitefish City Code 7-2-2 identifies the requirements of residents and business owners within the city limits of Whitefish to keep sidewalks and bike paths reasonably clear of ice, snow, slush, or other impediments in order to provide passage of pathways in the winter months. To adequately provide guidance to the public for the maintenance of sidewalks and shared use paths, staff members from Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and Planning and Building met with the city manager to review city code and address inconsistencies in the language in order to provide the council with revisions that will adequately address some of the ongoing concerns and challenges staff has had when maintaining the public right of way and when enforcing the removal of snow and ice by the public. The redlined version is in your packet, and I'm just going to go over those items and summarize them for you. Planning provided some updates to include additional commercial zones that were not previously listed in the old version. Staff replaced language that required all sidewalks and paths to be free and clear of all accumulations of snow and ice with language that requires all sidewalks and paths to be reasonably clear of accumulations of snow and ice and passable for pedestrians. I want to make it clear that this revision is not meant to lessen the standard of maintenance, but it's meant to address the feasibility of clearing snow and ice in Montana's climate and to lessen the city's risk by creating a more reasonable and achievable expectation for property owners. Bulbouts were added to the list of areas to be cleared in the business district. Language allowing for additional mitigations for managing the buildup of snow and ice was added. Language noting that de-icers may damage new sidewalks, street trees, and city landscaping was added. The 20% administrative fee was updated to have a $60 minimum and a $300 maximum to ensure the administrative fee is equitable, encourages compliance, and at a minimum recoups actual staff time. The code was revised to clarify that a written notice, either by mail or a door hanger, would be given prior to hiring a snow removal contract and billing the property. All other revisions within the ordinance constitute necessary changes in readability. There is no financial obligation for this ordinance. Staff, as well as the city of Whitefish, Board of Park Commissioners respectfully recommend that council adopt the revisions, and though I'm presenting the staff report, I did work closely with directors, tailor, and workmen to draft the revisions. So if you do have any questions, we may tag team that depending on the topic.
Thanks, Maria. Any questions for Maria on her staff report? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on item 6A. We'll hold that hearing now. Any public comment on this item?
Richard, come on.
Michelle, anyone online? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Steve?
I move to approve ordinance 25-06, amending Title VII, Chapter 2, Section 2.
Seceded by Counselor Caltabiano. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that is unanimous, Michelle. We will stay with Maria, our Park and Rec Director, to consider the award of the construction contract for Armory Park Master Plan Phase Four. Maria?
All right. I'm on a roll. This one's even shorter. So this is on page 88 of your packet. In accordance with the Armory Park Master Plan, staff has identified the primary components of the first two years of Phase Four of the Armory Park Master Plan. We began the bidding process for these projects this past month. Invitations to bid were advertised in the Daily Inner Lake, and bids were opened May 27th at 2:00 p.m. in the City Council Conference Room. We received six bids. All bids were accepted. Bids ranged from 20.9% lower to 77.1% higher than the engineer's estimate, and the bid totals and tabulations are included in your packet for your review. The apparent low bidder for the project was Lipka Excavating at $153,880. The current overall project budget for FY '25 and FY ' '26 is $950,000 identified in the resort tax fund, so we have adequate funding. Based on this available funding and project priorities, I respectfully recommend that the council award the Armory Park Master Plan Phase Four project bid to Lipka Excavating for a total contract amount of $153,880.
Thank you, Maria. I entertain a motion, please.
I move to adjudicate the project to the firm with the, was it the lowest bidding? Yeah, with that firm.
Lipka Excavating.
Lupka.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Sweeney. My only comment is it's interesting. I only recognize one of the six firms that bid. Are they all out of state or out of county?
No, not necessarily. There's some smaller ones that we speculate had done a lot of residential work, but this is a small bid for Armory Park for a city project, and they're seeing the potential to be able to move into these types of contracts with this small type of work. We're also just seeing a lot more bids coming in than we typically do.
That's great.
Yeah.
I will say Lipka has not been a general contractor for the city, but they've done a lot of subcontract work on alleys and other small excavating projects, and they've done a good job.
Great. Thanks, you guys. I would entertain a motion. Oh, we already did. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed like sign, and that's unanimous. Michelle, you have Dana's report enclosed with your packet. Any questions for Dana? Dana, anything additional to report on?
I'd just like to report that today we received our audit report for fiscal year '24. Kudos to Laney and the Finance Department. Once again, we've received a clean audit opinion with no findings. That's all I have.
That's great. Good work to the department heads. And we'll move on to item 8C, which we already covered, so we'll, is that correct? No, excuse me. Consideration of requests from the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust for funds from the city's Affordable Housing Fund to facilitate the purchase of 405 Trailview Way and to release the deed restriction. Kim?
Good evening again. Kim Morisaki, Executive Director of Northwest Montana Community Land Trust. I am here tonight to make an exceptionally large request from you today. As usual, when the opportunity for the land trust to purchase a home in Trailview comes available, we always try to do that because taking a deed restricted home and turning it into a community land trust home allows us to bring the purchase price down further and guarantee that it will stay affordable in perpetuity. Today, 405 Trailview is for, is available. You actually already approved us to lift the deed restriction on this about a month ago because we thought we had a different purchaser at the time. And at that time, do I have this right? I think I do. No, I may be confused. Maybe I do need to ask you to lift the deed restriction. I have two houses going, and I maybe just had a brain fart there for a second. I need to ask you to lift the deed restriction on it, and I also am asking for $100,000 to bring down the purchase price from $476,000 to $376,000 for the eventual homeowner. What we are finding is that homes that were built, the larger homes in Trailview that were built after the pandemic are, they were sold in the $450,000 range, and with the annual 3% increase every year, those homes are starting to push up against $500,000, and that is not necessarily affordable for people in that 140%, 130%, 150% AMI range. And so the land trust's hope is to continue to buy those homes, buy the land underneath those homes, and continue to bring them back down into the $300,000 range. That is the reason for this particular one. This home has actually had six different qualified, people look at it and then decide not to purchase it because it was too much of a stretch for them. And that's the reason why we are asking for the larger purchase amount. And I continue to write grant applications so that I will actually have some funds to do this sort of thing rather than have to come and ask you one at a time. But I don't currently have any extra funds to do that right now.
Any questions for Kim? Giuseppe?
I actually have a question for Dana and maybe one for Kim. Dana, this $100,000 would be disbursed out of the fund that we deemed towards affordable programs that 10% of the 3% resort tax?
So no, this would not come from resort tax, but would come from the four mills that we levied for fiscal year '25 in the Affordable Housing Fund.
Kim, very quickly.
Yes.
Refresh me, refresh me. There is the land trust that is buying the land under the property.
Yes.
And there is a new property owner that is buying the property, the walls in the house without the land.
Yes.
These $100,000, where are they going to end up?
So the current homeowner who owns that house has a right, according to the deed restriction, to receive $476,000. So what will happen is the land trust will bring $100,000, and the next homeowner who's been chosen will bring $376,000, and those funds will go together and they will pay the current homeowner. And then the next, the next time somebody buys that house, instead of starting at 476 and going up, it will actually start at 376 and go up.
Maybe I'm stupid tonight, but I didn't get it. I understand that there is $100,000 difference, but where, this money goes from the city chest, the city's chest, to whom?
To the current homeowner who is selling the house.
So is he gonna, is he gonna file an income on those $100,000? Obviously, how are we giving money to an individual?
He owns the house, and we're buying the house. And with the current deed restriction, the way it's written, there's a base price that he purchased the house for, and then every year, every single person who has a deed restriction on their house, they get 3% of that base price added on. And so he has a right to that $476,000 according to the deed restriction. The houses in that, if they were market rate, would be 650, but by, by adding 100, by bringing $100,000 and lowering the base price, the next homeowner, he's going to start at 376 and get 3% every year instead of starting at 476 and getting 3% every year.
Okay, I understand. So we're subsidizing the buyer, not the seller. The seller is going to get the full amount.
Yes, yes.
And we're subsidizing. So is there a realtor fee in this transaction?
I gave the buyer or the seller the opportunity to, to go with our real estate agent, who only charges $1,500 to handle paperwork. He chose to go with his real estate agent, and he negotiated a very low fee with her instead. But he's paying that out of his money.
Dana, what is the Affordable Housing Fund balance?
So for this fund, if you were to approve the $100,000, we would have approximately $2,300 left that hasn't been committed. We do have about $200,000 that is committed for the Alpenglow II project out of this fund. However, at this point, that project is on hold. So there's adequate funds available, but, so you could utilize this. One thing I want to note, this home does not currently have an AMI restriction on it, but under her ground lease, the, excuse me, Northwest Community Land Trust's ground lease, there would be an AMI restriction. So that's an addition. And then if you look at all of the properties that through Trailview have gone into this, this would be the 10th property. The first two did not have a contribution from the city, so the average would be about $31,000 per home that you would have contributed.
Sorry for the question. It's right in your staff report.
Nope, that's okay.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion, please. Or Ben?
Let me comment really quick.
Sure.
Kim, I really appreciate you, and I really appreciate you always coming here, just so you know. But I'm going to preface that first, and then I'm going to say I have a few concerns about this request, and I'm going to tell you why.
Okay.
So we have a very limited amount of funds available for affordable housing, and it has been my experience that, one of the reasons why I've really supported, when you brought these here previously, was that it came with matching funds attached.
Yes.
And so it allowed us to take a dollar of our affordable housing funds and extend it a lot further than it otherwise would. And I still think that's a wonderful way to do, to get, to work together to create excellent outcomes for people. You know, this one's a little tougher because it doesn't come with that, and so we're using taxpayer funds, dollar for dollar, to reduce home prices. And that tends to be the most expensive way to produce affordable housing. I mean, you have to buy a market price all the way down to something that's affordable, and this town is exorbitantly expensive. And, you know, I know that, as an example, the Alpenglow apartment complex, you know, is an entirely different way to use money, where you can borrow against that money and use it to create more apartments, and I think it can go further. And so I don't know, I guess I would just say that if we started looking at this sort of buy-down program, I might prefer to do it in a more holistic way. And, and also, this would take our, our fund balance down to essentially zero. And so I think for me, I don't know that I would support this request right now, but I just wanted to say all that so you understand that we support you and we want to continue to work together. Yes.
Can I, I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
In the 10 houses that we've done, we have brought 30, 60, 90, even $120,000 to the table. For each, each house had a different arrangement. Several of them that went to people with 80% AMI, we were able to bring 90 or $120,000. That, this time last year, we were fortunate that we were able to tap into both some federal funds and some national banking grant funds that were then matched by local banks. If I could, I would do that again. I just don't have access to, I just don't have access to them right now, and the house is available right now. And the federal funds, I have been told, will be available again starting this fall or this winter, and I fully intend to get my hands on as much of that as I possibly can to be able to bring to the table for Whitefish. I just, I don't intend to do this every time. This is kind of a one-time opportunity that presented itself, and I don't have another solution. But thank you. I do understand what you're saying.
Further comments? Or Giuseppe?
Yes, I guess I'm asking ourselves this question. I agree with Ben, by the way, and I agree with Kim, since you agree with Ben, so that's an upgrade. I was wondering if you have this certainty, and it's a matter of time, is there a way that, we, we have deposits that generate interest. Can we loan them the money for 12 months, and at a certain reasonable interest? They're going to get the grant, they're going to pay it back, and it's neutral to the taxpayers, and we have affordable housing?
The council would have to adopt some type of, like, revolving loan program for that to work. You would need some official documents, interest rates, those type of things. Timing-wise on getting that completed might not meet the timing for the seller's intent to sell. It's definitely a program that we should look into for our resort tax dollars, not just for this program, but for other developments. For example, Alpenglow II, you could have it be a revolving loan type of scenario where they're able to utilize the funds and avoid financing costs during construction. So it's definitely a program that we should look into, but for this scenario, I think the timing would likely prohibit the land trust from purchasing this property. Again, they're putting income restrictions on there. The average taxpayer contribution for 10 Trailview homes is $31,000. As Kim mentioned, in the other homes, they've brought forward at least, if not more. And so when you look at the percentage of what the land trusts provided versus what city taxpayers have provided is different, or is, there is that benefit. So yes, that program's possible, but I don't think it would meet the timeline for this property specifically.
Frank?
I appreciate both Ben's and Giuseppe's concern here, but I think the, the key issue here is opportunity that we have as a community to provide these funds under these circumstances to do a good thing. Which is what we want these funds to be used for. We have to keep in mind that we have never been asked or had to been asked to be in a position where we had to contribute anything close to this, but at the same time, the land trust has brought a lot more money to each one of these purchases than the city's been asked to participate in. I mean, you can see that with the average cost of what we've contributed, which we would have contributed. cost of what we've contributed, which we would have contributed probably without even thinking about it. On an average basis, we would have done it anyway. Um, I think this is, it's a little unfortunate timing. At the same time, that's what these funds are for. We can't, I, I think it's, uh, silly or it would, it's foolish for us not to take the opportunity to buy these homes down even further on a perpetual basis. Um, given what we now know is the average cost or the average contribution that we've made to all of these. I think it, I think it's a fair, it's a fair trade in terms of what the land trust has brought, in terms of reducing the prices of these homes and providing them in the most affordable way that can be provided on a long-term basis. Um, so I, I really am gonna support this. And I, I think it's, I think we have to look at it as a one-off. This is not, we're not making a policy statement here. We're not, that's not what we're about doing. I think we're trying to deal with a discrete problem, which we can. And we know what the parameters are and what we, when we can't do this, or when, how we wanna operate in the future. I think we oughta take this opportunity to, um, to buy this home down and to put it in a better position, long-term, for this community. If we don't, if we don't do it now, we may not get that opportunity again for a very long time. So I, I appreciate and I think they're all really valid concerns, but I think we have to think about this in terms of a discrete matter, a discrete house, under these circumstances. So that's all I would say to argue.
Do you care to make a motion?
I do. I would move that we, um, award the $100,000 or support the payment of $100,000 to support this.
Seconded by Counselor Norton. Further discussion? Rebecca?
Yeah, Alpenglow Two is on hold right now, right Dana? So is, is this $200,000 for this fiscal year? Um, or is it carried over into next fiscal year too?
So funds remaining at the end of fiscal year '25, which will be the end of this month, will carry over to next fiscal year for Alpenglow Two. So we still have those committed through the contract. So you can't spend those funds because that is already under that contract. We have additional funds in the resort tax, um, fund for housing that is also dedicated to Alpenglow Two. Those will also, you'll see those in the budget, um, as well.
Okay. And so the snow lot's not going anywhere at this time. Alpenglow's not being built at this time. So this is really, um, other than private partnerships where we have people dedicated, um, building affordable housing units within their complex. This is the only way that we are actually building affordable housing right now in perpetuity. So I, even though it's more than we normally spend, we have the money. And also, this is one strategy that people use all across the nation, is they, they put more and more land into conservancy, into the land trusts as a way to preserve their towns, actually. And people that aren't even, um, needing affordable housing are doing it with Kim. They're just electing to do it to keep the housing stock local. So I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Giuseppe?
Yeah, uh, respectfully, I, I disagree with the exception point, Frank. Uh, we just learned that the community has contributed $31,000 per hu- per affordable houses?
On average.
With this $100,000, it would be $31,000.
Without this?
For, without this, um, it would be $21,000.
Okay.
Well, no, sorry. $210,000 divided by nine, if anybody can do that off the top of your head.
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three thousand. So that tells me that this $100,000 would go five homes if we looked at the bigger picture rather than the exception. So we're, we're discussing here to drain the funds to zero, uh, for one home, when, I mean, if, if we could have the loan, it would be fantastic, but we don't have it. So I would, as legislators here, I don't wanna look at the exception. I want to look at the big picture. And, and maybe those $100,000, four months from now, would go a longer distance. Thank you.
Further comments?
My only comment is, a bird in the hand is worth a whole lot more than two in the bush. And so I'll leave it at that.
Never heard that.
I know you haven't.
Just kidding. Andy?
He raised his hand.
All those in favor of the motion? Or did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments, I guess. Um, when I first saw the $100,000 number, I will admit that I was a little shocked by that. Um, and kind of the way it came to us, I think, Kim, just in the way you wrote it, it's like, oh, we're just buying down the cost of the house by $100,000. It didn't really convey that we were actually purchasing a land lease like we have in the past, and I understand that, so that's fine. Um, and then I was like, well, $100,000, but I'm comfortable with the fact that we're very comfortable with spending $30,000 per lot to buy a land lease. And I think that we've done that, obviously, six other times and seven other times now. Um, we were lucky to get two for free. I think that was pretty awesome. Thank you for that, Kim. That was a good thing. So we still come out at like $31,000 and $31,000 seems to be the number per house that we're willing to spend. And so I'm comfortable supporting it for that. And I will agree with Frank that it is a burden of hand. And it's not like there's more houses being built there and we may not have other opportunities in the future. And I think that anytime we can get a family in the house, that's an important thing. And I don't think that this sets a precedent for us. And while Giuseppe, you commented that that could be five other houses, my question to you on that would be where? So I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion, too.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And the motion does carry on a four to two vote with Giuseppe and Ben voting in opposition. Thanks very much, Kim.
Thank you. And I won't make it a habit to come and ask for $100,000 every year. Every time.
I'll move on to item 9A. We need to appoint a new council representative to the community development board. And on that note, I just wanted to thank Steve on behalf of the council for all your work over what's been, what, 15 years working on that board?
I don't know.
You lost track?
A long time, yeah.
Yeah, but thank you very much. You, you kept them in their lane, or at least tried to, so. Frank, are you up for the challenge?
I agreed with Steve, um, that I would be happy to, to step in on a, on a near-term basis, uh, certainly for the remainder of the year until we would, until a new council is seated and we might make decisions on where, who might be interested and available for that. I mean, I've got, um, I, I like Steve, have participated on that board, um, for even longer. Um, given my history, I, I kinda get it. It's hard to, to manage, but I'm willing to do it. Um, and my wife has reluctantly agreed to allow me the extra two meetings a month.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone willing to be a backup in the event that Frank can't make the meeting?
I'd give you a backup.
Okay. Council comfortable with that?
Counsel.
Those appointments? I'll just take a motion for the record.
I, I moved to appoint Counselor Frank Sweeney, um, as Counselor Representative at the Whitefish Community Development Board, uh, for the remainder of the year. And Counselor Norton as a backup.
There second?
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Norton. All those in favor? And that's unanimous as well. We covered 9B.
Excellent.
Uh, we'll go to counselor comments. I'm gonna start here, just to try to get through our business from the work session. Uh, it's my understanding that we need to authorize a consultant, RFP, to deal with the land use element. Is that correct?
We would bring that to council, but yes, that'll be a future consideration if you wanna give direction that
Yep.
that's okay for us to at least proceed with that process.
Sounds like it's really not an option to not do that, so.
Probably.
Is everyone in agreement to proceed?
Yep.
Is there any, any sense of how much something like that may cost?
It depends on what the scope of services requires, but it could be $100, $200,000. But we have the grant funds, so to be clear, this would be grant funds that would be utilized for this.
And do you feel, I mean, cause we hired a consultant for the economic development chapter, correct?
Correct.
And did that go well enough? And do we feel that it'll help expedite this?
I'll leave that to Dave, but in my opinion, this is gonna be somebody who's more of a facilitator, that is trying to, uh, work with the public, work on how do we collect data, public outreach, those type of things. Um, economic develop, that, economic development, um, report is very much more data-driven than I think what we would be looking at here. This is gonna be more of bringing community thoughts together. But Dave, if you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, economic development, we had to, you know, go out with the specialists that specialize in economic development. That was the third time that we worked with that consultant. Um, Kate McMahon used them on the Wisconsin Avenue corridor plan and we, um, used them again on our Highway 83 South plan. So we were comfortable using them as a consultant again. Um, and this, I mean, you know, a lot of people are busy right now. Most of the cities that are implementing MLUPA are using consultants. I don't know how busy they are. You know, we're gonna kind of be a crapshoot, I guess, to see, you know, which consultants out there within the state, um, would even, you know, put in an RFP. I don't, I'm not really sure. So, um, but it's really gonna be down to the scope of work, what it's gonna cost. And I'm, you know, guessing probably $200,000 or, you know, in that ballpark. But we also want them to do some design work for us and also make some suggestions with regard to, you know, zoning language with, for implementing MLUPA.
Who would like to start? Giuseppe, any comments this evening?
Uh, just a question. Are we commenting to give direction to the staff? All we needed tonight for the staff regarding to the work session was this decision about the consultant?
That was my understanding. That was the direction you were looking for, Dana.
I think for that, it, it's good to hear that, you know, I can get a simple head nod that we can proceed with, at least drafting a scope of services and determining how that would work, so.
I think you got them.
Yeah.
You got the head nod, nod. And, um, yes, I have a, I have a comment. I actually have two comments. I'm, I'm sorry. Rebecca, I did some studying and I called people and I want to, um, uh, secure, tell the public that, uh, the fear of cars, train cars, full of liquid nitrogen, being hit by a little plane that crashes on that car, will cause surely the destruction of the plane, the death of the occupants of the plane, but no further incident in an open space. Because liquid nitrogen pushes the oxygen out. So there is no fire and there is no, um, pollutant in the air. And I remember you being concerned about the airport and the airplanes over trains carrying liquid nitrogen. Actually, as I was studying this, I learned that a Tesla or an electric car that would cross the rail, crossing and hit that same train, would cause a big, big fire. So that's comment number one, for the public to feel better about trains with liquid nitrogen on board and planes. Um, the second comment is, I would like to help, looking at the Explorer Whitefish data and complete the picture that was given by some public comments today. Someone said that the international spending, the data says international spending, not Canada spending, from, uh, the Air Data Report and the Visa Report, is down $300,000. So I went and studied that report. And what I found out is that, year-to-date, 24 over 23, 24 over 23, international spending went up $100,000. Domestic spending in Whitefish dropped $1 million. So 24 over 23, year-to-date, and you can take Explorer Whitefish's report, the total visitor spending in Whitefish dropped by one mil- by $900,000. Now we take this one year forward, 25 over 24, same period, international spending dropped $300,000. Domestic spending increased $3 million. So I'd like for the public to realize that if we look at the international spending, yes, we're doing not very well. But I take any spending, I'm not discriminating on where the money's coming from, and our domestic spending has gone up 3 million for a net of $2.7 million, just for the record. Thank you.
Thanks, Giuseppe. Steve?
Yeah, thanks, John. Um, uh, we heard a lot of testimony tonight and I think it behooves us to address it at least somewhat. So, um, Angie, can you give us kind of an update on where we are in, with the, um, Del Castillo situation? What's going on? Um, as much as you can tell us about, you know, my goal is to be transparent here with the public. And I think that behooves alls that we do that as much as possible, as much as we're legally allowed to. So could you just kind of give us an update about, um, where we are?
Yes, I can, absolutely. Um, so we originally, um, released an incident report that was very brief because it wasn't a detainment, it wasn't even a ticket, it was just a warning. Um, subsequently, we released a more complete case report in the interest of transparency because people had questions about, um, the gentleman being, you know, pulled over for a traffic citation. Um, we do, um, have policies in place. We have released those to the public. They are publicly available. As far as training records go, we have those as well, which are publicly available. To the best of my knowledge, nobody's asked for those records other than the Daily Inner Lake and we will be providing those to the Daily Inner Lake.
How would somebody go about asking for?
Just a public records request.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's an email. It's pretty simple. Um, with respect to the body cam footage, we are not releasing that. That's confidential criminal justice information at this point. Um, it is against the law for me to release it. It's also against my ethical duties as a lawyer, Bridger's ethical duties as a police officer. That can be attained by a court order, which anybody can, um, seek. And I have been in touch with Becker's, um, attorneys and they know that that is the route to go. They've been extremely professional. So they will be seeking that. But that is not information that we would release to the general public, again, without a court order.
Okay. So it's, so it's illegal for us to release?
I can't do it. It is a misdemeanor for me to release anything that I think might be confidential criminal justice information. I can give that to the court and the court can order me to release it and I will gladly do so, but that is not a call that I can professionally make.
I see. So, so if a court orders this, then, then it's no problem?
Correct.
We'll release it without?
What I would anticipate doing is giving that information to the court and have them do an in-camera review. And if they weigh the privacy interests, um, in favor of release, then we'd absolutely release it. But that, again, that's a call neither Bridger nor I can make.
Okay. Okay. Um, I, I think that's, uh, to me, it seems like that's as much as we can do. We have the, we have our policies. We have, you're going to release to anybody who asks the training procedures and training.
Correct.
I don't even know what to call that.
Yeah. And Deputy Conway actually was kind enough to pull that information. For me, there are daily bulletins that cover, you know, um, biased policing that cover immigration. Our officers are expected to read those and be familiar with them. We also do DER training, um, which all of our officers have received. And all those documents, again, are a matter of public record.
Okay. Um, all right. So it's not like we haven't done, like the, it's not like we don't have these policies and trainings in place.
We do. Absolutely, we do.
All right. And now we're going to allow people to see what, what exactly they get?
People could have always said that.
Okay.
Truthfully. I mean, it, that is a matter of public record. The, these are just, you know, trainings that our police officers go through and those are a matter of public record. The body cam footage is not a matter of public record. But again, if people wanna go to the court and get a court order, I'm happy to provide that, but that's not a call I can make. And that's not a call Bridger can make.
Okay. Um, and Dana, is this something we need to have a closed-door session about so we can look at? I, I don't even know what we would really look at, but...
So, um, according to our charter, the, um, city administrator is responsible for the staff of the city. And I can tell you, you know, I've heard allegations, we've heard allegations of racial profiling, biased-based policing. Our policy clearly states for biased-based policing that any allegations are investigated. It takes time to fully understand the facts, the allegations, um, and go through that process. Unfortunately for the public, that is something that, um, is not available for public, public information, whether or not we do an investigation and what the outcome is. Um, that puts the city at a liability risk. Personnel, individual employees do have the right to privacy when it comes to any type of disciplinary action.
Okay.
But I do want the public to understand that we've taken the concerns very seriously and that we are following, following policy.
Okay. Thank you. Um, to me, that satisfies, to me, that we are doing
To me, that satisfies, to me, that we are doing our due diligence on our end about what's been going on. And I, I just wanna say to the public that as a white person, I can't feel the same things that, that other people can feel about being scared, not feeling safe in our community. I've lived in communities where I haven't felt safe, and it doesn't feel good, so I, I sort of understand, but I don't understand at the same time. And at the same time, I, I just hope we can keep, keep our heads throughout this whole issue, because it's important that we don't eat ourselves alive over this, because it's not something that that was born here in Whitefish. And we know this for sure, and it's not something that is common here in Whitefish. This is the only incident that I can think of in my twenty-five years here that I've even heard of something that is this inflammatory. And, and by all accounts, our police department does get it right. They do. And, so I just, I, and I don't wanna take away from what happened either, because I've said it time and again that an injustice was done. We're getting more information out there as much as we can. We're not trying to hide things. We're doing the best we can right now with the information that we have, and I just wish people could have patience with us. It's important, again, we don't eat ourselves alive over this. We are a small community that values diversity, that values difference in thought. One of the most open communities in all of Montana, certainly in northwestern Montana. And I, I want us to be, be careful because we all want somebody to blame. We're all angry. Everybody up here is angry about what's, what's happened, what's going on, on the, in the greater picture as well. And when people get angry, they want somebody to blame. And unfortunately, we have an incident now right in our midst, where we can find someone to blame. And it's unfortunate that it's happening here, because, again, this is not, this is not a racist community. And so, let's be careful. Let's really be careful and keep that blame where it lies. And I would hope that it, it makes me really sad that people don't feel safe here. People of brown people, black people, orange people, whatever, that somebody wouldn't feel safe here. It really makes me feel sad. And I, I have a hard time because it feels like we are being thrown under the bus of this whole thing that is coming down on us, raining down on us from above. And I just, I want people to be careful where they place their anger, because we, we can be angry at what happened, and let's figure out who to really blame for this, because that's, that's the, that's the way out of this together, is to really place the blame where it is, instead of eating ourselves alive. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Steve. Frank, anything this evening?
Not much. I, I will make one comment. I think the the one comment I heard earlier was from Patty, I guess, who, I guess, has been an educator, and, and one of the things she talked about was this growth mindset. And I think one of the things that we should all take from this is that we're in that process. I think this incident has brought to our attention a problem, and an unfortunate circumstance. But the way out of it is through the growth mindset. For you to receive information, for us to receive information on how you feel and what you want, want to have happen, understanding that there are any number of things that we feel that aren't necessarily accurate. The blame doesn't belong for this incident on I, I'll leave it at that, but I think suffice to say, we are hearing you, and I think everybody in this staff has heard you, and we are going through the process of the growth mindset. We all learn about what our process is. We all learn what the community wants, which is, quite frankly, exactly what our police department wants, so. I, I leave that. That's my only comment for this, that this evening. Other than that, it's getting to be summertime.
Thanks, Frank. Ben?
I might shift gears for one second and comment on our work session with respect to the growth policy. I will say that, just watching from afar what's, what happened recently with the adoption of the Heart of Whitefish version, I would say that was a little concerning to me, how that happened, and I don't think the process that was followed there is exactly what I would like to see out of that. And so, I'm gonna make two suggestions that I heard in there that rang true to me. One is for the Heart of Whitefish, which I would preface by saying, well, by the way, I'm gonna back up and say, I appreciate all the edits that were made. A lot of them, I think, are actually fine edits. There's nothing wrong with it. There are some in there that I probably disagree with, but as a whole, I do not wanna discourage anybody from participating, but to the Heart of Whitefish, I think it would help, if you have a hundred people commenting on that document, I think it would help a lot to make that comment public, or, or said differently, to not be aggregating the commentary of other, either organizations or people in the town, but, you know, encourage people to participate in the process directly, and that allows the diversity of opinions to come forth without them being, you know, screened down in any, any particular way. And then my second thought is, as it relates to the planning board, I, I don't think that adopting any person's version of a, of a document is an optimal way to go about this. I would ask, I think Toby's comment made some sense to me about you know, going through, I don't know if it's issue by issue or line by line, but, you know, somehow incorporating the best parts of all of this feedback into the working draft. I mean, maybe you adopt all of them, I don't know, but it does seem like maybe a more detailed process of actually going through and consolidating that feedback from all sources would be a, perhaps a better way to go about this, and I'm content to you know, let the planning board just take it from here, but if I was on the planning board, I think it could be considered to reopen the public comment on that one more time and just hear it, but that's just me. So, but I wanna end that by saying, I really appreciate, I know how hard this is. There's a lot of competing opinions. It's politics. People do not agree, and that's the nature of it, and I, I know from personal experience how hard it is to be in your shoes, both our planning, planning board members, as well as the people who are participating, and I just wanna tell you how much that is greatly appreciated, because the, the role that you are all playing in this process, as difficult as it is, and it feels like you're banging your head on a wall, is literally how the sausage gets made. And so, you gotta, you gotta work through it, and, and I just wanna send a lot of thanks to everybody that's participating in that process right now, because this council would simply be unable to do it on her own, so, thanks.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca?
I agree with Ben. I think, you know, we assigned this to the planning board to complete, so it's a novel way of doing a growth policy for our town. But I, I do think a lot of good progress has been made, and I think if you just go back and revisit Allen's corrections, it will help. And I wanted to say thanks to Steve for clarifying all of that for the public, especially. It's, it's really hard to hear how scared people are right now, and I don't think in all the years I've lived, I've been in anything quite like this, where people are actually being afraid to travel, afraid for their loved ones, afraid of their civil rights. So, we will get through it, but it is a different time in America right now. I can't speak to the situation right now myself, but I'm just wondering if maybe our attorney or, or police chief could mention anything for improving safety, people's feeling of safety? Is there anything that you guys would recommend?
I'll speak on behalf of our attorney-in-chief, because we've talked about this a lot, and it's very important that that everyone know that all individuals, regardless of their immigration status, their race, how they look, they should feel secure when they are contacting our police department, or they're interacting with them in some manner. It's not gonna automatically lead to an immigration check or deportation by ICE or Border Patrol. We're here, and our police department is here to serve everyone equally, and provide protection for our community as a whole, so I think that's, that's something that, you know, we've, we've put out there, and it kinda gets missed, but it is something that is very important, and our officers, you know, are really taught and trained that they're enforcing these laws equally, and not racially profiling or bias-based policing. I guess I'd also add that I completely understand the community's concern. We have never had, in my tenure here, and please keep in mind that I represented the city long before I was city attorney through MMIA, we have never had a complaint about racial profiling, about the police treating somebody differently because of their skin color, because of their sex. So, I, while I do understand the concern, I have faith in our police department, that we are policing in a way that is appropriate, and I've represented other cities where that is not necessarily the case. So, just my two cents.
All right, thank you, guys. And, I guess that's all. I, I just wanted to, a small thing, but the Riverside Park Bridge got fortified with rock, and it's beautiful for anybody that goes down there and wants to use the river. J, was it JD Thinning that did the work, and it really is a work of art, so, thank you, Maria, for making that happen.
Thanks, Rebecca. Andy, anything this evening?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments about our work session earlier. I agree with Ben, and I think that one thing that kinda struck me as I read through everything today, it seems that it wasn't what was added as much that seemed to be a problem for people as it was the amount of things that were in fact deleted, and most of the things, as I read them, that were deleted were simply painting a picture of reality today. And I don't see that painting a picture of reality today is gonna greatly influence or change what ultimate policies come out over time, but one of the gentlemen said, it's gonna at least let people understand what does happen here, and you know, but the public, sometimes they forget, it's like, well, I can't buy underwear in town, but you don't want chain stores either. So, you only buy cheap underwear at large footprint retail that's probably a national retailer, because they're the ones that can buy in volume and buy them at a low enough cost. So, you have to balance those things, I think, and you're making any kind of criticism of any policy, and unfortunately, I think that was the biggest mistake made on the community development board side, was it was a lot of wholesale changes and a lot of wholesale deletion, and people felt a little blindsided by that, and so while they were, some of the speakers tonight were kinda giving the Heart of Whitefish a hard time for representing a bunch of other people, I did also notice a lot of cut and paste of the arguments in some of the letters that we got today too, so it happens on all sides, and I just hope everybody remembers that as we move forward, so, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Andy. I have nothing this evening, can't wait until the next meeting, so, anything further from staff?
This evening?
Thanks very much. We are adjourned.